It is November 4th, 6:00 PM, and this is our council work session. I'm going to call it to order. I'm going to begin with roll call. And we will start with Chuck Owen. I see you. Carl DeYoung. I know you're there, Carl. I saw you. Okay, I see you. Brenda Kinzer.
Present.
Brendan McLaughlin.
Present.
And Joellen Kestie.
Present.
I am looking for a motion to excuse Glenn Allen.
I make a motion. I make a motion to excuse Glenn Allen from today's meeting.
All right, thank you. Motion by Councilwoman Kinzer, signed by Councilman McLaughlin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. We're going to move right into the presentation. Before we do, I want to give you a heads up. If you haven't seen it already, I sent you an update on the COVID situation. I sent a PowerPoint along with bullet points. Just to make you aware that we are moving into a high-risk situation. And just to sum it all up, you can read about it on your email, but just to sum it all up, the majority of it's coming from social gatherings. So as we're moving into the holidays, just a reminder to your friends and family and to your community. You know, let's do that social distancing. Let's wash our hands. Let's wear our masks. Let's do what we need to do to keep this pandemic, this virus at bay. Okay, moving right along, we are going to start, we're going to begin with our own police department chief Tucker, or is it going to be Lieutenant McElwae? Hello, good evening.
Lieutenant McElwae was slated to be here, but he got stuck busting bad guys. Yeah, they've got, I think, a prisoner in custody and getting a search warrant and all that kind of stuff, so.
I'm here.
Oh, he's on. All right, there we go. So tonight I've got, I'm going to split this up into two different sections. I've got one section that is going to be, I guess, we're going to bounce back and forth. Some of this is going to be me and some of this is going to be Dan, but I'm going to get started here and I guess I do, just to kind of preface this, I kind of divided this up as Doug suggested into into a people section, talking about what we've got, what we need, what we're working on, where we're at, and then a section on operations slash capital. Most of our capital stuff also involves some operational needs as well, so. And I wanted to make sure that Dan had a chance to get in on this because he did the lion's share of the budget work and background. And he's got some of the detailed information that we're going to provide to you tonight. And everything that I've got here tonight, Doug's got in a in an email that I just sent him, so at some point he can send that out to you, just so you have a hard, hard copy of this. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. One of the things that I wanted to pass on to the council right away is that we're still working on 12-hour shifts, four on, four off, all of us, from me down to our newest people. We have 12 people, now 13, with Dion Witt recently getting cleared from training. We got 12 people that are covering 24/7. So breaking us up into three officer shifts has been our best bet. It's actually worked fairly well for us. We just don't have a lot of leeway. I was out on Saturday, tweaked my back a little bit, and we had to call in somebody and have them covering for me on overtime, and that's the way it's been. We either have two people or hopefully have three people on, but that's going to be changing really soon. And I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant McElwae to kind of cover who's who and when folks are getting out of the academy.
Okay, so I'll pick up from there. As Lynn just mentioned, Dion Witt just completed his field training, and he'll be on his own starting this week. We have six other people in the academy and Kira Foster and Harry McGahey are due to graduate November 20th, so here just in a couple of weeks. And just to give you an expected date when they'll be ready to be on their own on the road, they're scheduled to be done around March, early March, 2021. And we got two following kind of right after that, Cody Veltisen and Ruben Fortuna. They're scheduled to graduate on December 5th. So they're going to be projected to be done shortly after that, mid-March. And then we got Max Rosser. He's scheduled to be graduated in January 7th, and so he's projected mid-April to be finishing out on his own. And then we got last one in the academy, Brady Moore. He graduates February 17th, and he's scheduled projected to be done on his own by mid-May. And so what that entails is they all got to go, once they're done with the academy, they got to go out on field training, and that's just kind of showing you how much time it takes to get these guys fully on the road. So I'm hoping to have a better picture where we're at by then. Back to you, Lynn.
All right, so what that kind of tells you is we have one-third of our police department in the police academy right now. We are missing one-third of us. We're really excited to get these guys on the road. Dan and I went out and took them out to, took some of them out to dinner the other night down by the academy, and they were really excited about escaping from there, but also they've been really excited about what they're going through. They're going through a lot of the, it's a lot of pressure, but a lot of the training stuff right now of mock scenes and final tests, and their mock scenes is they're put in a they're just put in a situation, they have to work their way through it with a partner. So it's interesting to listen to these same stories they're talking about, or the same stories. Well, their story is a little bit different than mine, or in 1992, but they're in a pretty exciting place, and they're just getting ready to come out, and we're about ready to turn them loose on the city of Cedar Woolley. But I think when you get a chance to meet them, you're really going to like them. They are, I was a little skeptical of hiring people that are 10 years younger than my oldest child. But they're really, really good people, and they're really, really, they were really good choices. We really got a good deal on this. So like I said, one-third of our department's down there at CJTC right now, and they're ready to roll. As with any, any positives, we've got a few negatives coming up. This isn't a real negative, but it's another hurdle. One of our officers just gave us notice that his retirement is going to be effective the end of the year. Officer Carrick Holmberg. Carrick's got to been on about 15 or 18 years. I can't remember how long exactly, but he's due to retire, but we've been anticipating this. And once he gave us the word, we were able to give Doug the word, and we've already got another candidate kind of waiting in the wings. Those of you that have been around a while may remember Officer Katie Wilson. She took off and went to Marysville for a while and then decided that she'd rather be back up here. Approached us about the time we started looking around for Officer Holmberg's replacement, so we're hoping to make that kind of a seamless transition. And Doug's going to crunch some numbers and see when we can get her on board, the sooner the better. But at worst, most likely, right at the first of the year, we'll have hers replacement, so it'll be a relatively seamless transition. And then we still have one employee on extended medical leave. We're hoping to get that resolved by the end of the year. Doug's working on that. And, and if that pans out, then we'll be able to replace that position and get another body on the street. And then in planning for the future, we've got one officer that is going on military deployment in March, so we're losing him for a year, which is not a big surprise, but it's a, honestly, it's a pain in the ass. Sorry for my language there, but it really is, but he is serving our country, and it's not a big surprise. It's just, it's just a pain to replace these folks. But and he's, and it's Officer Cates is the officer that's going on deployment, and he's one of the only master certified defensive tactics instructors in the north end of the state, so his, he'll be leaving a big hole in our ranks for about a year. Then moving on to the operations capital section. The changes in political climate and the whims of society, culture, everything that's been going on in the last, actually, it started in 18 for us, but what's been going on lately has brought about many changes in the way things were, the way we are doing things, where we're going to be training, the way we're going to be working on things. And, and these the results of this are going to be, there's been a lot of changes in the requirements for our training, our certifications, and our ongoing just work that we're doing, and we're not getting a lot of support from the state. The state is putting this back on a lot of the cities for a lot of our training stuff. So one of the things that we're doing that's, and trying to fix some of these issues. And these issues are not just riots in Seattle, or Trump versus Biden, or anything like that. They are, they really initiated with I-940 back in 2018, and what that did was it brought us to a point where there was some really serious changes to police training and experience, so we're, we, we've already been rolling with the punches with that. A lot of the things that they've been calling for police to do in these changing times, we in Skagit County are already doing them. We, we've had body worn cameras since 2009. We've had some. So we've been doing some of the things that they're already calling for, but one of the things that we're looking for, and it's in the budget for this year, or for 2021, is partnering with the fire department for a kind of combination storage training building across the street from the police department. We've got kind of a, an idea of having a kind of a dojo in the back for when jets back from deployment to be training officers on defensive tactics, so that's, that's really an important thing for us, and it's important for what we're going to be needing to do in the next three to five years. And we've already got some mats and all that, but we're having to find a place to put those. The last time I trained, well, the first time I trained with the mats and the little auxiliary building behind the fire hall, too, it was about 40 degrees in there. Not really conducive to getting a lot of good training, and when your teeth are chattering, and I'm older and wandering around fighting in the 40-degree weather, it wasn't as much fun as I thought it would be. And then I'm going to turn on the, or turn the next section on to, or turn it over to Dan. He's going to talk a little bit about another program that we're looking at spending a little bit of money on next year. I hope. There he is.
Okay. So he was talking about some of the training that we got DT and stuff needs that we need to do and stuff like that, and the buildings for that, but in addition to those trainees, we have a currently an outdated policy manual that we're, you know, kind of stole from Mount Vernon in 2004, and right now we're just operating on policies that are up to date. One of the things, you know, state, state and federal laws change constantly, and, and along with policy and procedures, they need to change accordingly. Right now, I kind, we're, we're behind the game there. What, what we're trying to do here is adding into the budget and then trying to figure out is proposing moving to Lexington Police One Training Services and Policy. What that is, is a web-based system, provides a, us with illegally defensible, up-to-date policies that are key to lowering our liability as a city and police department and risk. So locally, what we're looking at is Mount Vernon and us, Cedar Woolley Police Department are the only agencies in Skagit County that are operating without this policy. It's a, it's a good policy, and Doug can probably touch bases on that after I'm done, but there's other things it adds. It adds, provides officers with daily training boltens, so we can be tested on the knowledge of the policies. Police One is also included in this, and it provides us access to online training to meet our yearly training requirements. So as what this, what entails this with Lexington, policy updates are provided automatically, and they're continually reviewing state and federal laws, court decisions, and best practices with other law enforcement agencies in the state and, in our, our region, you know? So they're going to give us the best policies there are to protect our department and provide those to us. When we make changes to the policy right now, for acknowledgement, we're, you know, going around, hey, if you read this policy, send emails, going around and signing a sheet, so they have to sign off on it. Through this, the update goes through, you send it out as one, and everybody has to acknowledge it. Keeps records of those training records and such, takes a little bit off of my plate and the chief's plate. So the whole process is Lexington, one was Lexington. It's a big process. But what they do is it goes through a full implementation of the policy manual, going through our policy machine, procedures, a high little bit, high liability issues, high-risk areas, all the way through, giving us the best policy available for our department. And they can make it specific to our department. And that's kind of what I got for now. Lynn, do you have anything to add to that one?
No, but every time we talk to Nikki about anything, and she wants to look at her policy, she says, you guys aren't on Lexington. Like, well, sorry, no, not yet. And Doug, if you're on there, did you get a chance to talk to Nikki about the, the move to Lexington?
I did, Lynn, and I think Dan covered it well. Lexington, really, it's a policy and training database for fire and police. And the, the thing, or the situation you don't want to be in as a department is you're having to rewrite your policy because something happened, and you found out it was missing something that you're now in court over. So the good thing about Lexington is a lot of these policies and things are up to date, and they've been tested in court. And it makes sure that we're running our policies and procedures at really the highest standards. And if the department talks about becoming accredited at some future date and things, Lexington's a good thing to have a check on the box. And let alone the value we get from those different policies. That's what I got.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And I, I want to extend both to, if the public is listening, but also to the council. A huge thanks for the support on Proposition One. I, that, what you're hearing tonight is because of the hard work and the dedication that you put towards that, so on behalf of all of us, thank you very much for supporting that.
I have some questions for Chief Tucker, if I may ask.
Absolutely. I was just going to ask other questions. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, Chief Tucker, I assume you're operating on a little bit of overtime right now. Is that correct?
Right. We've got, I'm a pretty regular, but our overtime is kind of normal like that. We're, we're backfilling a lot with with overtime on some of those when we're just running only, we only have two people on, and somebody calls in sick, like tonight, we had somebody call in sick.
Okay. Go ahead.
No. You know, we've, our night, or our, one of the things that, you know, going along with what the mayor said, I do want to thank everybody. That was on the bottom of my list to, to everybody on council that helped us get this approved. Thank you, Mayor, for kicking that in there. But what, what we've been experiencing is what our officers have been experiencing for the last two years. Is the getting their days off and then getting their days off kind of torpedoed by getting called in. They, they love the work. They love where they work. They love who they work for, who they work with. It's all a really good relationship. It just wears you out.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. Is that budgeted in? Is all that overtime budgeted in, or is it over and above what you have allowed for on salaries in the budget?
Well, we, we changed our scheduling this year, so actually, the overtime that we're having to do now is probably a little less than we did last year, and we haven't been on budget for overtime for, or not, not very close for the last probably several years. As, as an example, one major incident, we had, and this is several years ago now, but we had a shooting out at Ball Street Apartments. That's $10,000 overtime. So it's, it's kind of hard for us to stay on budget for some things like that, but one of the things that we're experiencing is, is that, you know, rob from one line to pay another. When we're short on the wages for an officer that is somehow magically done through accounting and city supervisory stuff like that, to make that all balance out. You know, we're spending about $100,000 a year in overtime. And that is just, that's a lot for, for as few of us as there are, but it's kind of the norm in our field. Everybody's experiencing the same thing.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Tucker. Appreciate it.
Any last questions or comments for Chief Tucker? Okay. I see Councilman Allen is on, so I want to acknowledge that, put that into the record that he is here. Welcome, Glenn. Glad to see you here. So moving on, we will talk with or hear from Chief Klinger. Or would it be Assistant Fire Chief Wagner?
Good evening, Mayor. It'll actually, we'll, we'll be doing kind of like the police department doing a tag team. We, we followed again, like Lynn said, we followed Doug's suggestion here, and we'll go through salaries, operations, and then capital facilities. Under the salaries, I wanted to kind of give you a breakdown of what we actually have, and I'm not sure of a lot of the council. I know some of the council are, are aware of the way we kind of operate, and some aren't, I don't think. We, we currently have 49 employees with the fire department. Out of that 49, 25 of them are solely volunteers with the department. Seven of them are part-time. They actually work with other agencies and they work with us part-time. Six of them are a combination of part-time and a volunteer, and then we have 11 total paid staff. And they're, they're paid at a little bit different rates. The volunteers are paid on a on-call-per-hour basis. So as your call volume increases, your volunteer pay increases in that. The COVID has, has kind of gave us an interesting year as far as our training goes. If you look at our budget, Doug and I, we're having this discussion yesterday, that our, our training budget, our overall payroll has kind of gone down because we haven't been able to get together and train. We're, that's just now starting to switch over where we're starting to get together again, but we still haven't got the whole department together since March to actually do a, a department-wide training, so that's, we're hoping that'll switch over fairly soon. We really need to get the group together as a whole and, and work together. And one of the things that that has affected, we haven't spent any, hardly any overtime for the medics for their training, because there hasn't been any. And that's going to change next year also, so you'll start to see, as we come out of this COVID, a little more of the utilization of that overtime, because they haven't been able to go to the training that they need to get to either. One of the things that we're going to have, be looking for in 2021, as far as the staffing levels go, is you have two chiefs leaving the department in 2021, myself and Chief Olson will be retiring. So there are two positions that we're going to need filling there in the beginning of the year. So that's something I know we've been working with Doug and the mayor on, so we're, hopefully, we're, we're on course for getting that taken care of. In getting those positions filled. And that's kind of the, the payroll area, and, and I'm not sure if everybody's aware, we do get some of the payroll back to us from Fire District Eight through the contract services that we provide to them. They pay for half of the part-time staffing that we have on, and that, those contracts, those negotiations will be taking place in next, probably June, July of next year. That contract is up also. So now, is there any questions on the payroll or, and how the volunteers are paid? Same way, I know it's kind, it seems kind of a little bit difficult to follow sometimes as far as the pay, paying the volunteers. If not, we'll go straight into the operations, and, and Chief Wagner will, will work on that.
Thank you, council and Mayor. But as you all know, we cover all, we have covered all of our ALS and BLS ambulance calls here in the local city and Fire District Eight over, you know, the last however many years. Close to our 100th year anniversary is going to be coming up here in May 21st of 2021. We're on our second full year. We're finishing up right now with the ALS transition, where we took over the contracted services of providing not only advanced life support with our paramedics we brought on, but also handling basic life support calls, utilizing the two EMTs that we have with our resident program here, our part-time program with the folks that, that live here at Station One and Two, where we have six bedrooms up at Station Two, and, and the seven here at Station One, which has been a great partnership between our bargaining unit here, our volunteers, and our part-time staff to try to minimize the cost that we have for our budgeting purposes and allowing us to provide the, the great services that our community and citizens are used to. On a normal EMS call, we'll have anywhere, we'll have seven people all the time, 24 hours a day, but on a motor vehicle accident or CPR or a fire, a lot of times we'll have anywhere from 18 to 26 people, and it's a great resource to have, to be able to pull for, from on-on-demand type of a resource that minimizes our cost and, and maximizes our operational abilities. The trend that we're, we were seeing pre-COVID was that we were looking at double-digit increases in our volunteer payroll, as well as our call volume and training needs. Then COVID happened, and we saw across the county and probably across the state and the nation, a lot of folks didn't want to call 911 anymore because they were afraid of going into what a lot of them were describing as the Petri dishes of these hospitals and clinics. So they wanted us to either give them an answer at the door and not see them, or not even call us at all. So it, it decreased our transport rate. It decreased a lot of our call volume there for a few months. And where we were in those double-digit increases, we have started to get those back. So the last couple of months, we're running a 10% to 11% increase monthly, which is unheard of for us over the, the last 25 or 30 years. We were looking at anywhere from a 2% to 5% on average, and we're, we're looking at a trend of probably next year, hopefully staying in that 8% to 10% or lower if things continue to, to trend the way we are. But we're one of the only agencies that provides that 24-hour BLS car right now. Burlington is doing a pilot program and trying to do the same, and following our footsteps, and, and they're working at, at doing that as well, but with the new Pro QA dispatch system, where we'll be able to send the right resource to the right call. The Skagit 911 and the EMS council are working on currently, that's hoping to go live the second week of December. That may increase the call volume of that rig, because with our contracted services, we're providing those ambulances anywhere they're needed in the county. Obviously, we, we take care of our primary area here of Cedar Woolley District Eight, parts of Day Creek, Clear Lake, and Hamilton primarily, but when we're out of resources, Burlington and Mount Vernon come over, and vice versa, we do the same for them. So as those trends go up, obviously, a little bit of the budgeting cost and training like Chief Klinger talked about will increase as well. But we're looking forward to a, a good 21 and 22 in this biennial budget.
The capital facilities, I'm sorry, before I go on, does there may have any questions for Chief Wagner as far as operation-wise? What we have going on? Okay, not seeing any. Capital facilities-wise, we have in 2021, in working with Mark, and thank God Mark can work his magic on Excel and run that spreadsheet in the ERNR. In 2021, we have a ambulance that is being replaced, and then in 2022, there'll be two ambulances being replaced. We actually sent We actually sent. Over for your council packet today. The purchase agreement for the one ambulance for in 2021. It's a 280-day build out, so we actually won't get that until September of next year. And so there there won't be any payment due until then. We do have the other project that we're working on with with Mark and Lynn. Also is the facility next to. Fire Station One here, I know Lynn called the police station, but it's actually the right next door to the fire station site. But but we'll, yeah, I see that lit. Okay, we'll we'll hopefully be able to get that. That's been. We've been working on that for what? I think it's been three years now. Since we bought that property over there and then we got the property, the house removed. And it just kind of set on it this year. I'm taking 2020 and just kind of wiping the slate clean like it didn't happen. But hopefully in 2021, we'll be able to get that started because I know. It's kind of key to a lot of other projects that are going on. I know Mark needs a building that's. Down at the wastewater treatment plant that he's going to be talking about in the street department area. He needs it gone so the police department can get their stuff out. And get it into here. So it's, there's a lot of little moving parts with it and that is. All of the major. Facilities issues that we have, so it's the the building and over the next two years, the three ambulances. Is there any questions on any of? Our presentation? Did I miss anything, Mayor?
No, I don't think so. I was going to comment that I actually called the building on Murdoch Station 1.5. That's how I have my budget letter. All right. So well, thank you. Thank you, Dean, and thank you, Frank. And hearing no comments or questions, we'll move on to planning Director John Coleman.
I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here. Go to little power. Up here. Can you, can you see my screen at the moment?
I can't see it, John. I have your presentation here, though, if you want me to. Open it.
Sorry for the technical difficulties. I tried to get fancy here and it's not working out for me.
I'll go ahead and open it here.
Can you see it there now? Okay.
I I can't see it.
Well, I'll just get started then. So a building. Little different than the police, fire, and public works. We're mostly, you know, staff and salaries. We don't have facilities and equipment. So ours is going to be a lot. I did want to talk about some of the things that we. That we do in planning and for I get to. Some of the staffing costs and needs and such. So general, if you can go to the next one, please. Was to promote the general. Of Cedar Woolley to assist the citizens with code and permanent process. And then we work daily with developers and contracts to achieve their goals. As well as other city departments to provide a coordinated effort. All this is to provide a. Provide a place that everybody enjoys living in. You can go to the next slide. Oh, we do, we work. Within, we work with administration of state and federal land development regulations and of course our own city. Municipal code regulations, like I mentioned, we work with customers such as property developers and just residents who have questions about. And. Then, of course, we provide notice to other citizens about what's what sort of activities are going on in town. If you can go to the next one, thank you, Bill. The. Our philosophy is to provide a high-quality professional customer service environment. We like to be called the friendly planning and building department, and I think that's really the way. I think that reputation does. Get recognized throughout the area. We have a goal of getting to yes, so we're not here to get in people's way. We're here to help people. Do what they intend to do and make the process easier for them. All while, you know, enforcing and using the codes that we have in place to make sure that. Any development that happens in town is also good for the rest of the community. So. It's a balance of the residents, the existing residents in the community and the people that want to develop in the community. Quick turnaround times and spending quality time talking with customers, not rushing people through. Next slide, please. So. That's. Probably what you'll hear over and over is from the departments is everybody's quite busy. Our population this year as of April 1st was estimated at 11,890. That's about 11,000, I'm sorry, 1100, 1200 new residents in the past five years. And over the past 20 years. Added over 3,000 new residents. That's that's quite a bit for a small town, and I think we're doing a good job managing all of this. Next slide, please. Talked a little bit of.
John, can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any projection on population increase in the next five years? With all the new construction going?
That's one of the things that we do is we. Is we plan out for 20 years, and so we're expecting 4,500, 40, 45, 5, 4,550, I think. New residents by 2036. We don't break that down necessarily by year kind of. Was in spurts and slow times. But we're definitely in a in a spurt at the moment. I haven't. I haven't, I don't have any information in front of me. Is that based? I don't have the data in front of.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Is that based on new construction and projections of permits requested?
So the the 20-year projection is based on the city's growth over the past. Many, many years. So we we extrapolate our trajectory, you know, we did this process back in 2015 and 16. Where we projected how much growth we're going to see. And we worked with all the Skagit County jurisdictions and the Skagit Council of Governments to to estimate what. Likely growth scenario would be for the city of Cedar Woolley. And then we do all of our capital facilities planning based on those projections. So. All of the departments that are, you know, talking about their expected growth over the next, you know. Five, 10, 15, 20 years. That that is goes through the planning process and we we help identify what those new growth. What the new growth is going to be like over the next 20 years. So that helps all of the departments determine. How much they, how much new facilities, new new vehicles, equipment, staff. Those all. Filtered through that 20-year growth plan.
Okay, and again, what was? What was the number by 2036?
About. About 4,500, 936.
Okay. Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
I can't tell if my.
Sorry, my power is glitching here. I'm not sure I'm hearing you.
Or now, is that working better?
Can hear you now.
It's very windy up here today.
It is here too.
Hoping the roof doesn't blow off during this conversation. Since 2019, we've had 36 new residential units been completed. And and 35 under construction right now. Next slide, please, Bill.
Thank you, John.
That just goes. Yeah, I hope that answers enough. You are what is expected right now. So. The active development applications we have is a, you know, there's quite a bit and you've heard some of these, you know, the 201 lot subdivision up at Duke's Hill. We've got eight active short plats. That's, you know, probably 15 or 20 or 30 or so new lots, but that every little bit helps. And it just goes to show how much we're doing. Eight active short plats is by far the most we've. Oh, in since I've been here in 50. You know, of the 20, 20-acre annexation north of Fire Station Two, the 60-plus acre annexation north of Jones Estates. The 85-lot subdivision of the construction on McGaragall Road and 28-lot subdivision that the planet. Will begin construction any day over an FNS grade road that would continue Garden Bean Road. This is. So we're seeing going on and that will add to our the the number of residents in town. So please, and not not to beat you over the head with too much information here, but. You know, we're also expecting 110-lot planned residential development at the golf course. 65-lot subdivision east of FNS Grade Road at the Bucko Property. We're anticipating a 24-unit multifamily on Curtis Street and another one on Cook Road. Of course, the RJ Group's proposal, we're expecting a mixed-use commercial building. Former Safeway site. Which would be about seven. Minutes and 14,000 square commercial space. So there's a lot going. I get to the details of what's going on. It's. So that brings me to the next slide, which is the department needs. We're, we don't need any major capital outlays. We're we're doing doing good. We just want to make sure that we're able to continue. Staff that we have so we can accommodate all this projected growth and all of the permits going on. I've mentioned in the past, asking for some modest technology upgrades so we can get into the. Better online service, especially during times of COVID and. Just, we just would need to be able to continue our our high quality of service that we. Provide to the public. One good piece of news is we're working on our Shoreline Master Program in 2020, then that'll be going to the Planning Commission. The next couple of months and then eventually to the City Council for approval. We received. $16,800 grant for doing that SMP update. Let's start billing for that. Sure. The idea is we just have the ability to culture positive relationships with our customers and the only way to do that is to make sure that we're able to give everybody. The time and the and attention that everybody deserves and likes to have. That brings us to the next slide. Which is, you know, we've we've developed a really good reputation in the community in the valley. People are very enthusiastic. You know, develop. Homeowners. We've developed good relationship with local developers. We're. Be super happy with the services we provide and our staff services. So that's great. We have been running out of bill. For people who wanted to build homes to find places, as I pointed out, there's a couple of plots that are larger plots that are under construction, so we'll be able to. Be more residential building lots in the the short term and all. Gets me to the point that, you know, we're we're trying to accommodate the needs of the community development of the development community. And of course, the people that live, the long-time residents and business owners. And strike a balance between accommodating new development that's good for the city. Making sure that that new development is in. In in the best interest of the people that live here. That's about all. Hey, so any questions?
Yeah, John, this is Glenn Allen. I'm kind of in a. Less than perfect mood tonight, probably. I live in Old Town and I have noticed in the last year. I'm on Talcott Street, there are a lot more water probably coming from Duke's Hill or somewhere. I mean, are you? You were saying that you want to take care of the older or older residential areas. I I've never seen in 28 years the amount of water accumulated in my yard and stuff, and I don't know. Obviously, water runs downhill, so maybe you can address that. Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, I can talk to that. The. New elements, they're required to follow state and development regulations. You know, the planning and building department address the building and the the land use. Or in sewer and those are managed are reviewed by the engineering department, which is under the Public Works Department. The planning and building department works hand in hand with them to make sure that all new development is getting. Reviewed by the engineering department and they and they do. Engineering department does that. So as far as specific stormwater questions, those are things that the. Engineering department addresses and it's it's a tough task. Maybe that's something that if you have some specific water, stormwater issues, you could have a conversation with.
So John, you're you're cutting in and out, and so who you're saying to have a conversation with, I don't think any of us picked that up.
Mark Freiberger.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the the specific stormwater issues are addressed by the engineering department. So. Mark Freiberger and David Lee work very hard on those and. On the stormwater issues and they can help you out if you have specific questions about stormwater issues.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question, Glenn?
And it it does matter, Mayor. You know, it's just, it seems worse than it used to be and I'm not picking on anybody. I'm just wondering. You know, if if other people have experienced this problem.
Okay. All right.
We we at the Building Planning and Engineering Department often hear questions about stormwater. And Mark can probably speak to this better, but, you know, we've been seeing harder rainfalls in shorter durations, so it's. We get more inundation than we recall. Even though the Public Works Department's doing a job of increasing and improving stormwater facilities.
All right, I see where Councilman DeYoung, you have a question?
Hey, John, great report. Thank you, as always. And appreciate all the hard work the planning department puts in. I am wondering about the slide, a couple of slides back where you're asking for some technology, modest technology support. And I'm lowering my hand here on the discussion part. So could you talk a little bit more about that? Is that hardware, software? How's that interface with the community? Is that more back office things? Is that a monthly charge? Is that something staff hears? Bill and his department's working on it for you. Is there some cross-purposing budgets? Can you? Can you just give me a little more detail about the modest technology upgrades, please?
So you managed to identify every single aspect. It is hardware, it is software, it is bill and IT and it is subscriptions and annual fees. And really, the, the only thing that we're talking about is, is having an online portal. So people can submit applications online and then everything would be paperless. So we're going away from having paper files. So it's, it's, it's increased technology. It's, you know, an iPad here and there for the building inspector. It's a couple of new monitors. It's barely anything beyond the, the norm of technology that an office needs to do every once in a while. It's really just a couple of thousand dollars here and there. Those, the one thing that's out of, out of the usual for our pretty standard budget, we, we kind of keep, keep a very thin budget and don't ask for a whole lot. And keep it pretty even from year to year. So this is, that's the only difference.
All right. And then to follow up on that, our discussions throughout the year about some code enforcement, especially with our planning department. We, we've talked about some instances where, especially in the rental community where something won't get fixed. Though the tenant will move out and still be put into a place that wouldn't meet code today. But because when it was built, it met code then, but there may have been some ad hoc. Ad hoc building and construction in the meantime, and there really isn't someone that's trained up to go out and take a look at the electrical or take a look at a gas meter that might be too close to an exhaust fan for a sparking incident. Do you have plans on working that through a little bit with the planning department and with the code enforcement? Thank you.
Well, so that's a, that's a tough one. The, the building inspector is certainly qualified to go out and do that. But it is not the, the duty of the building inspector or the building department to go and do building inspections to find deficiencies in every single, single, in every single home or commercial residence.
We're talking about a complaint driven process, right?
Right. And that, that enters a code enforcement thing. If somebody calls us out and we have them go through the landlord tenant act process, in which case, you know, they have to work with their landlord or the property owner. After the property owner, if the property owner fails to take care of it, then we can go out and do some inspections and write a minor report saying what needs to be done. It's not that we're unable to do that. It's just that it's a process that is a little bit outside of the typical building inspection for new development. It's, it's kind of a, a side hobby.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So any other questions from any of the council members? All right, moving on, we will go to Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
All right. Can y'all hear me okay? Great. So guess the first thing. I'll go over, can you see the five year budget comparison on the screen here?
Yeah, I see it, Bill.
Okay, great. So staff wise, we're not anticipating any increase in staff since.
I'm sorry, Bill. Can you magnify that by another 15 to 20%? Yes, thank you so much.
A little better? There you go.
Thanks for having me.
No problem. And remember, each of you can also increase that on your screen if it's still too small. The not, not anticipating any, any new staffing as we doubled our staff in 2019. Thank you, council. And our budget wise, we're, we're kind of keeping in track here. 2021 and 2022 are only going to be slightly more than 2020. And I'll pull up the details here. And is it as windy over there as it is here? Okay, so here's looking at the 2021 proposed budget. Everything pretty much is the same as in 2020, but just some minor, minor increases in, under professional services due to increases in the hosted Microsoft Exchange. Deploying the Smash archiving to more than just the core users. And some enhancements to GovQA and a few other minor things. The the budget for 2022, we're kind of assuming is going to be about the same. And pull it up here. There we go. And what we're, we're planning to do is our, our network hardware at 15,000, I think that we can within that make some enhancements to the, the new council AV system. If there are any, any other enhancements to the touchless entry system that aren't covered by the, the CARES Act reimbursement this year. We may be able to do a few of those, add a few doors here and there. The, in 2021, some of our big projects that we're planning are to to extend fiber optic to the pump stations. We'll be working with the wastewater treatment plant and planning for that. The budget wise, it shouldn't be a big hit as we've already assisted in paying for the backbone. And so it, the, the main expenses will just be connecting up each of those pump stations. We'll also be planning to upgrade our Windows domain system. Right now, we're on 2012 R2 for Windows and we'll be upgrading to the latest version there. We'll be reevaluating the wireless carrier contracts. Right now, we're with Verizon and about every two to five years. It's a real good idea to take another look at that and, and make sure that we're getting you know, the best value for our money and look at competitors and of course, make sure that their coverage is, is adequate for, for our area to, especially for public safety. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. We're plugging away with the, the transition to hosted Microsoft Exchange. And Glenn is wrapping up the, the touchless key entry system. And if you have any questions, fire away.
Any questions or comments for Bill?
I'm here.
Councilman DeYoung.
Thank you. Bill, just a note, I'm very excited and eager to see that fiber connected to the wastewater. I think that'll be a great addition to the city. So I'm glad we're working with that and I'm glad you reported on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's, it's been a long time in the process.
All right. Here we know whether questions or comments, we will move on to Public Works Director, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you. Give me just a second to get my screen up here. Okay, can you see that now? All right. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about public works a little bit tonight. I've got a number of slides here and I've covered in these, the various operations that we have within the Public Works Department. I'll talk a little bit about personnel and those needs and I'll give you a, a fairly comprehensive look at the capital projects that are coming up in the next couple of years that'll affect the city. And a lot of this, of course, dovetails very nicely in with what the other departments have already talked about. We are seeing some fairly significant growth in the city and Public Works is all about managing that from the infrastructure transfer, infrastructure perspective. And we have to make sure the roads are adequate for that, that we have solid waste capacity to handle the growth that's happening. Wastewater collection, of course, and treatment are very critical things. So we'll talk about all of those a little bit. Just a little at, at the beginning about Public Works and engineering. There's three of us in that department, David Lee, myself and Julie Rosario. And we basically assist all of the other operating public works departments with their activities. We provide engineering and administrative support for that. Just a note on that personnel factor for the, the volume of work that you're going to see in the capital of projects. Basically, we touch all of that at one point or another in the process. Julie handles much of the prevailing wage requirements and the other L and I requirements for every dollar that we spend with outside consultants or contractors. And David does some of the actual design of the engineering projects that we put out every year as well as managing others. As well as acting as our stormwater permit manager. And all of the projects that John talks about, David has his cut at those in reviewing those from their impact on our, our public facilities, our roads, wastewater and those kind of, kind of other things. So we stay pretty busy most days with those things. We also provide project management and grant administration for all the Public Works Department projects that I'll be talking about with the individual departments. I mentioned David's the stormwater permit manager. And we also handle any activities by utilities or others that are working that affect our right of way. And so that's basically the engineering side. Again, three persons, personnel there. The Parks Fund, by the way, Nathan is in tonight. So if you have any questions on, on really drilling in on the details, he's the man for that. But operations wise, in the Parks Department, we currently have four full-time employees doing various parts of parks and facilities. And that's, that's Nathan's core crew for that. What they are basically handling are the major parks that we have. And I wish I could give you the list offhand. We actually have talked about that quite a bit in the last few days in conjunction with our ADA inventory that we're doing. We're going to have a person from our consultant out looking at all of the parks and recreation facilities from the ADA aspect starting next week. And Nathan and his crew will be shepherding them around. And so our Parks Crew basically manage and maintain all of the various parks that we have. And we're also planning, as you know, for future parks at Homestead and North Reed Street. I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute. As far as planning that we're doing, Nathan does have on the books to prepare a master park plan. We've kind of been filling these in as we go for the last number of years. We're going to step back a little bit and just take a look at the overall Parks inventory and the Parks needs coming in the future with that master plan and kind of put that down in paper to memorialize where we're at and where we want to head as we go forward with, with the facilities to support the existing and the future growth that's projected for the city. Capital improvement project wise for 2021, in the Parks Fund, we actually have about $125,000 in projects planned. The master plan I mentioned a little bit ago. We have an annual buildings and structures line item that's about 35,000. This, in 2021, we're doing the community center restroom upgrade in conjunction with Rotary. And also Fire Station One quarters upgrade at $10,000. Memorial Park Phase One Infrastructure, as you know, we've been attempting for several years to obtain RCO funding to upgrade Memorial Park and add a splash facility. We haven't had any success thus far. And we've stepped back on that and are now looking at a more condensed version of that. And we've got some design work with our consultant city land design schedule for 2021 to support that. And on Homestead Park, you've heard that we have been successful at, at obtaining a half a million dollar grant from RCO through one of their programs for the infrastructure improvements for our Homestead. So we have scheduled to do the final design, the preliminary design to 75% is already complete. We did that in preparing for the grant application. The final design, we're estimating around $50,000 for 2021. And then you'll see in the 2022 capital projects, the construction phase at a million 257 for that. We also have in 2022, another buildings and structures item for Fire Station One roof. And then Memorial Park Phase One Infrastructure, that's pending funding, but that's on our capital facilities plan. So that's pretty much Parks. And if you want to interrupt me at any time as I go through these to talk about a specific operation within Public Works, please feel free to do so.
Mark.
Go ahead.
Mark, I'd just like to really thank Nathan. This is kind of off topic, but I really want to thank Nathan and his crew for going up to the Northern State Cemetery and repairing all the damage or at least sandblasting off all the graffiti that the vandals get up there. It means a lot to me and I really appreciate that. And I want to thank them for that. And hopefully we can keep more eyes on that area. So that we can let people know that we're watching. And that kind of problem lessens. So thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thanks, Nathan. Okay. Moving on to the cemetery, no major capital projects planned other than a niche wall for 2021. That will continue with its current, current workload pretty much. We have one full-time employee there. And we have a part timer that helps out in the, in the summertime for that. And so that's pretty much cemetery. Fund 103 Streets. We have basically between the Streets Department and 425 Storm, we have three full-time employees right now, plus one position that was when Travis Wood resigned last year, we'll be filling that in the beginning of 2021 to get us back up to the four full-time employees that, that department takes between those two operations. So we'll be planning for annual local program, local street maintenance projects. We basically do crack seals, chip seals and overlay projects on an annual basis. We also keep our pavement rating system up to date and we will be looking to implement our, the results of our ADA transition plan out of this particular budget as well as in the arterial. So what I show in the capital improvements program for the 21 and 22 are $200,000 in projects. You can see what the projects are planned for 2021. Nathan has given me that detail. We do $150,000 in resurfacing, surfacing projects of those various types I mentioned. And we've also budgeted 50,000 for ADA upgrade projects. That'll be mainly replacing curb ramps and some sidewalks around town. That's pretty much a drop in the bucket as you can probably appreciate with the age of some of our facilities. But it's a start. And this is one thing, when the ADA transit, the American Disabilities Act Transition Plan is complete in March of next year, we'll take a real look at this and see what we actually should be doing. Is complete in, uh, March of next year, we'll take a real look at this and see what we actually should be doing. Uh, to get our facilities up to date. The plan will more or less, uh. Utilize the existing capital projects that we're already. Planning to do for arterials and local streets, uh, we'll upgrade them as we do projects. Uh, that's the primary way we're going to do that. But as you know, we're doing quite a bit of public outreach on that right now. And another criteria that we're going to look at are. The perceived needs around town, uh, our particular problems that we might have that. Reduce assess accessibility around the town. That will be part of our criteria to look at that. And I'm actually seeing this, this fifty thousand dollar project you're seeing here to address some of those. If we've got particular. Barriers that should be addressed, that's how we plan to do that. So any questions on funnel, Fund 103? And by the way, I, because of the way the, uh, screen share is, I can't see you. If you raise your hands, just need to speak up.
I have a question for you, Mark.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank, thanks for having Fun 103 up here. Uh, and I see that we're going to be doing some work in Ward, in Ward Three, uh. And, and thank you for, uh, displaying that on the schedule. I have seen some, uh, some patches coming in and it's good to see that. Uh, those patches are going to be addressed with a chip seal coming up. Uh, my, my overarching question, Mark. Is after we lost the transportation benefit district funding. Uh, of, I, I believe the number is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. How are you replacing that money to help do these? Uh, projects that, uh, i- i- is kind of like the number one thing I hear in my neighborhood is, hey, this pothole. Or what are we doing about the streets? So, um, i- if you could address that a little bit, uh, talk about how you creatively got to here, please.
Yes, thank you for asking that, uh, asking that question. That's a very important one. Um, the transportation, uh, benefit district, uh, is funded by vehicle tabs and, uh, I nine seventy-six. Put the hold on that, but as you may have heard, uh, the Supreme Court has struck down I nine seventy-six. So the big question now is how legislature will react to that. When the first of these vehicle tab programs came out, also a Tim Iman initiative. Back about 10 years ago, uh, that one was also struck down at the Supreme Court level. Uh, but legislature, uh, elected to proceed with reductions anyway. And so they did that administratively or legislatively rather than through the, uh, initiative. That's an open question whether they'll do that again. The impacts of I nine seventy-six, as you've heard me say several times, are huge, not just for local agencies that rely on transportation benefit districts. But they're also a, a billion dollar plus impact on the Department of Transportation. And on the, uh, Highway Patrol. Uh, and so there's some, there's some huge holes that that creates in the state budget. That given the other issues that we've got related, related to COVID nineteen. It's, it's really, uh, an open question as to whether they will try to backfill or to. Uh, do a, uh, substitution for I nine seventy-six. We're kind of hoping not, uh, but that remains to be seen. So maybe that money will come back and we are still accumulating that because, uh. I nine seventy-six not having been adopted, uh, the fees are still being collected. I think we're up to a hundred and fifty thousand of our. Annual two hundred thousand we've been seeing. Uh, in our, in our, uh, funds for that right now. Uh, we've been holding them on the chance that we'd have to return them if. Uh, that, uh, legislation was retroactive to back to when it passed. Uh, and it's hard to say what'll happen at this point, but that's still the status. So for the funding, uh, for 2020, since we didn't use those funds. Uh, we worked closely with Doug and administration and Jill. Uh, and identified that we had sufficient REIT funds to backfill that. And that's what we are budgeting for 2021 and 2022 at this point are, uh, REIT one and two funds, uh, to fund. Uh, these, uh, these needs here for, uh, local access streets. So hopefully that answers your question.
Mark, as usual, very comprehensive and detailed, uh, answer, and, uh, I feel educated. Uh, to, to talk to my neighbors about, uh, how we can get some bottles fixed. Thanks for being on it.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions on 103? Okay, 104 is the arterial streets fund. And, um, this one doesn't really have any, uh, employees associated with it. Uh, mostly it's a management operation by engineering, which is David and Julie and I. Um, we have a pretty big plan, uh, or program planned for the next two years, as you can see there. Uh, and, and a lot of this is in support of the Jones John Liner Trail Quarter Projects that you all have heard. A lot about from me over the last few years. So looking down through the bullet points there for 2021, we have two point four million dollars in projects. Uh, on the books. I will say that two of those, the ones that are, uh, outlined in blue. They're subject to, uh, grant applications that haven't been funded yet. Uh, McGargle, the SR nine McGargle, we'll know on that one in a couple of weeks when Tib. Meets if that one's funded or not. And so that will affect both the 2021. Design number you see in the 2022. Construction. And I, I really don't know where we're heading on that yet, but, uh. We do have them at our transportation improvement programs, uh, so I wanted to go ahead and list that. The same is true for the two overlay projects you see, Wicker Road, uh, is. Uh, the one we've got for 2021 and then another one on Trail Road in 2022. We applied for Wicker as a part of our TIB applications this year, so we'll also be waiting on. The results, uh, in November, uh, the third week of November on that. Uh, the other projects that are funded, uh, we have the Jones John Liner BNSF Railroad Undercrossing. We have about eight hundred and fifty thousand in a rail's grant from DOT for that through, uh. Senator Wagner's intervention last year. And we're working with BNSF to get that project designed and built, uh. In the spring of 2021. We also have federal dollars for the intersection improvements at SR twenty, SR nine township. Uh, that's in final design, uh, as we speak. Uh, and, uh, the construction phase is seven hundred thousand, as you see there. We hope to be having that one out to bid in January. Uh, we did identify an additional right-of-way need in the last couple of weeks though, uh. And we're working on getting that taken care of. It's, it's not a, a, uh. An acquisition per se, it's a temporary construction easement, but it still requires, uh, the federal process, which is a little bit. More difficult than we, the, when we're doing local access streets. Uh, David is also designing the next phase of our extension of our, our, uh, Highway twenty trail system. We're calling that Phase Two A and that runs from roughly Hope Cap Road to Hodgins Street. And, uh, we're designing that in-house. It's part of the engineering, uh, things I mentioned earlier. About sixty-eight thousand for that. Uh, that project doesn't have construction money until 2023, so you don't see it on the next year there, but you will. In the next year's version of this, this update. Uh, John Liner Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements is another federally funded project through SCAG. Uh, we are on track to, uh, obligate design funds for that, uh, this year and, uh, begin to design next year. I will say on that one, I am waiting anxiously on the results of the, uh, the bigger SR nine McGargle project because they kind of tie together and I need to know. How that intersection's going to get built and when, uh, to know exactly, uh, how to design that, that, that part of that bicycle ped project, but. Uh, so they are interrelated. There's a small roundabout enhancement project that we've been, uh, bouncing down the road for the last couple of years to do some. Landscaping improvements in a couple of our center islands of existing round, uh, roundabouts. We're trying to get that one done this year. We also have some, uh, channelization improvements on the books for SR twenty and Reed Street. And then our annual maintenance projects, uh, we do a hundred thousand dollars a year, again funded from REIT right now. Uh, we had in the past used TBD particularly for this. In fact. The transportation benefit funds actually don't, uh, work for local access account one oh three, but they are. Uh, usable for this account one oh four. Uh, and so we have on there, uh, chip seal, uh, project plan for FNS Grade Road. And for, uh. A slurry seal project for FNS as well. Uh, the limits from the West City Limits to Merle and, uh. A crack sealing project on Sterling, third to Township. Then those projects are continued, uh, from design to construction in some phases in 2022 with a million nine hundred thousand dollars of projects. Uh, there's a, a little carryover of the Cascade Trail design and the design for the John Liner. Uh, bike ped project. Again, that one is scheduled for construction in 2023 as well. And then the construction phase for the two projects that I, or the two TIB application projects. And an arterial maintenance project at a hundred thousand dollars for that year as well. Any questions on account one oh four or Fund 104?
Oh, I'll go again.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mark. And 104, and, and I see the big ones come on 401, so, uh, just, uh, on 104 here, um. I really am, uh, glad to see the Wicker Road overlay is coming in. Uh, I know a lot of my neighbors there on the, uh, on the north end of the, um, ward are excited about that, but then they are also. Very concerned about, as we always see, uh, when we improve a road, let's say Railroad Avenue, uh, that, uh. Uh, Chief Tucker and his crew gets a little busier. And I was wondering in this Wicker Road overlay, are there any plans for any traffic calming? Um, any? Uh, a- anything in that way, uh, so that way we don't have the speedway between Township and Virginia there.
Well, we don't currently have any plans. That particular road's not really too conducive to that. Pretty much just. Not, and, uh, so. The traffic calming devices that we've tried a few places, uh, like the, uh, uh, little, uh, traffic circle down it. Uh, on South Township Street. I, I'm not really thinking it'd work out very well there. Um. So I, I don't have a good answer for you on that. That does happen though.
Some chicanes or something.
On some other streets as well.
And, and then my, uh, uh, large overarching question here on, uh, 104 is you've got, uh, some great. Ideas here, especially with John Liner and, uh, the McGargill with, uh, bicycle. Or what I would call a, uh, non-motorized multimodal. Uh, area. That's the terms that we're using down in Olympia the past couple of years trying to get this going. And I, I was, uh. Uh, wondering how we could get a connection between, uh, John Liner, uh, down to, um. River Road, down to, uh, Riverfront Park. And then that would, uh, make some sort of loop. As we go from, uh, Riverfront Park, uh, past the, uh, E and E and the high school up on, uh. On, uh, some, uh, Cascade Trail down Fruitdale and then back to the park. And I think that would be a great thing for families to enjoy. Uh, something to think about. Don't see it on this list. Might be as you would say illustrative. Um, but, uh, I'm, uh, I'm excited to see something happening on John Liner. Uh, up there in District, uh, two and five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the big one, wastewater. So we have, uh, operationally speaking, we have seven full-time employees down there, our operators at the plant. And, uh, they also bring a seasonal land once a year, uh, to help with. Things, uh, weed cutting and that kind of stuff, uh, during the summer season. Uh, their plans, uh, they're pretty much continuing, uh, operations as, as they normally do. Uh, as you know, we've had a supervisor change down there. Kevin Nguyen is now in, in charge with retirement of Debbie Allen, uh, her much deserved retirement. Uh, so there's, and we have, uh, two new operators in addition to that. And so a lot of what they're doing right now is, uh, training and integrating that new staff, uh. And I, I will say they're doing an excellent job of that. No big hiccups down there. We're still doing what we need to do to treat the water in. Coordinates with our NFTs, uh, permit requirement from ecology. Uh, they're implementing a new software system for, uh, reporting on. The things that we have to report on a monthly basis to the Department of Ecology. Uh, that's taking up, uh, some of Bill's time as well as he helps with that. And as I've been talking about, and you will see in a, in the next couple of, uh, council meetings, our 2020 comprehensive sewer plan. Update, uh, that, that's been a vital part of the process, the planning process we do in public works. Uh, which looks at both the collection system, including our, our twelve. Uh, pump stations and our wastewater treatment facility and. Looks at them from, uh, existing condition and looks at growth requirements, uh, in a. Coordination with what, uh, John is predict, uh, projecting for the city, uh, and. Uh, and plans for that growth for the next, uh, ten to twenty years. So, um, the big story of that, of course. Uh, is where are we heading with the wastewater treatment facility? And, uh, the utility committee, we met with them last week and talked about our annual sewer outlook. Update that we do and we have in that our capital improvement program, which, which we've, uh, married the. Plan that we did for our sewer comprehensive plan to this outlook, uh, that we did this year. And, uh, we're still looking at somewhere around 2027, 28. Uh, that, uh, a major upgrade to that treatment plan. Totally depends on growth. Uh, we have in our sewer outlook and in that comprehensive plan assumed about three hundred new connections. Uh, between 2021 and 2029, uh. Yeah, it, it varies. We've allowed seventy-five a year for four years and fifty for the others. It, it works out actually to six hundred. I'm sorry, I said three, but it's six hundred over that. That ten-year period. That, uh, that seems to be tracking pretty close with what we've been seeing in the last few years. Could go up, could go down on an individual year, but average out, averaging out about that amount. And so that would put our treatment plant somewhere out towards the end of that, that ten-year window that we've looked at in the plans. In the meantime, uh, we identified in. In our sewer, uh, condition assessment and capacity study that we did over the last couple of years. Uh, some things that we need to do to get the plant up to where it actually is able to treat. Uh, to the limits that our permit already allows. We found, as I've mentioned several times. That we had some, some problems that we needed to deal with. Uh, one of which is a major project that we're now designing and will be building in 2021, and that's moving our laboratory operations building. From its current location on one of our major tanks, uh, to a, uh. To a separate location over on Alexander Street. Uh, that design is about thirty percent complete right now and, and we should have that one ready to go to permit stage sometime in January. It's about a million six project altogether with, uh, construction management and. And, uh, and construction costs. And we hope to have that completed by the end of 2021. Um, we have some miscellaneous structural repairs for about forty-six thousand. Those are things like ceiling cracks in our, our older structures we have, uh, we're going to take care of those with our on-call contractor. Uh, we'll be doing an arc flash study update after we complete the next project on the list, which is our electrical improvements project, which we bid. Uh, in September, uh, the delay on building that till 2021 was just, uh, equipment acquisition. Some of them were. Up to twenty-two weeks to acquire, uh, that's all in process and. We're looking at starting that project in February. And being complete by the end of March. And that's a, that's a much needed improvement to deal with some. Electrical issues that we've discovered at the plant as we've done our annual, uh, electrical. Uh, equipment analysis on the project, on the, on the plant. We also are going to be upgrading, uh, the HVAC, uh, in various buildings around the plant. Uh, we're doing kind of one a year of those until we get those all complete. The first one is the plant water building. Uh, for fifty thousand dollars. And then we have our annual collection system upgrade project. This will again be an in-house design by David Lee. About three hundred and sixty thousand. And this is on Ball Street, basically from, uh, state up to, um. Up to Ferry, uh, we'll be upgrading that and it's the, the main itself was lined some years ago with our CIPP process. Uh, but we have some laterals that the city actually owns that run east and west of that that serve. Six to 10 homes each that, uh, also need to be upgraded. They're, they're of the same age as the mains that we fixed before. And then, uh, another project we're going to be having on an annual basis is upgrading our pump stations. As I mentioned earlier, we have twelve of these, uh, they're at various ages. Uh, we, this year in 2020, we're upgrading Cook Road. We're putting new pumps or rails in. Uh, that project has been awarded, uh, to Pump Tech and will be happening. Towards the end of the year this, this year. And then, uh, next year's planned one is West State Street. Both of these pump stations were installed in the same year and they're now twenty-one, twenty-two years old. Uh, the pumps in those, just like any mechanical thing, wear out after a while. And so these are our, uh, planned improvements for those facilities. Then in 2022, uh, we have the next. Then in two thousand and twenty-two, we have the next state of projects to handle those existing capacity issues. Once we've moved the, the laboratory operations building off of the old anoxic tank, then we're going to put it back in service. Basically, it has not been operated since the plant was remodeled in nineteen ninety-eight. It basically provides pre-treatment before the water goes into the oxidation ditch that we have our main treatment. But we've never utilized it. Our, our very innovative operations crew has been able to, by the way they operate the anoxic tank, recreate what this anoxic tank here would do. But because we're getting closer to our plant capacity with growth, we're no longer able to meet that consistently. So get, putting that tank back into operation and upgrading the mixers to make that work is a project plan for two thousand and twenty-two. We also have some annual process control upgrades and various small projects that are listed there. And our collection system project R nine is planned, that will be another in-house design. There's a couple of expansion projects shown in two thousand and twenty-two in our, in our capital improvement program. I've got them on here. These are pretty much related to growth. In the case of Patrick Street, that one wouldn't happen unless we had a developer project that came in that would push that project along. But we have it on the cap, cap plan, so it shows up here. Homestead Park, this is the sewer extension to support that park development. And that's actually a part of the overall budget for Homestead Park's infrastructure. And we also have a, a pump station for the sewer system. We actually have two. One of them's quite old, and this is the upgrade of the pumps in that for the Mountain View Pump Station. We have a newer one on Magargill, but it's quite a ways down the road before it will need to be done. So between these two CIPs, there's almost three million in two thousand and twenty-one and another million in two thousand and twenty-two in improvements. And you will see similar numbers in two thousand and twenty-three as we complete those short-term upgrades, getting ready for the new plant upgrade. So there, there will be smaller projects in twenty-four and twenty-five, and then, then we'll start ramping up as we get closer to the actual plant expansion, which we're estimating at about eighteen million dollars over a two-year period in two thousand and twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Any questions on sanitary sewer before I move on with that? I know that's a lot to digest. And I'll just keep giving you that information as it comes up in my reports at the council sessions. Solid waste.
I'm going to interject, Mark. I want to interject here just a moment. So we still have Doug, and I want to give time for questions for him, but we want to hear the rest of your report. So I'm going to encourage the council, if they have further questions, to email you and to attach us all so that the response could be read by all. So, thank you, council, thank you, Mark, go ahead.
And I think the rest of this will go pretty quickly, Mayor, and if I do need to stop short, just, just tell me. So Solid Waste has six full-time employees and a, and a part-timer that assists them with cleaning the office and things like that. That workload is pretty much projected to be the same for the next couple of years. We are, however, and again, in conjunction with the growth the city's seeing, we're monitoring and adjusting operations as needed to reflect that. And recycling market is another thing that we've been having discussions with administration on. The recycling market has basically collapsed. We actually are, are still doing that, that we are still able to dispose of them, but we're actually paying a pretty good premium over what we pay for just disposing to solid waste for our recycling. We do have budgeted to continue that operation, but it's something we need to keep a close eye on as, as time goes on. And again, there will come a point in the not-too-distant future when we're going to have to look at adding another truck and another employee to service that. There may be some interplay with what we do with recycling on that, but that, that will be a need that will be coming up downstream. I don't have any capital projects associated directly with solid waste, but solid waste as well as the sewer utility are paying parts of the and monthly fees to fund the new Public Works Building, which I'll talk about in just a moment. So stormwater, I've kind of talked about the operations part of that already. We manage that under our NIPD Stormwater Permit, David Lee is the Permit Manager for that. The operations we do under that are inspecting, cleaning and maintaining stormwater pipelines, structures, pump station, ditches. All to meet that. And we have quite a, quite a number of those things. For instance, there's about two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand feet of pipe in the ground out there, two pump stations, seventy-four hundred feet of ditch, I mean culverts, thirty-eight thousand feet of ditch, and then four and a half miles of Brickyard Creek, which we manage under this utility. So the guys stay pretty busy with that. We, we do an annual catch basin inspection program. Every two years, we have to have looked in every catch basin that we have. And we're up to somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and seventy-five of those, I believe is what the number is now, catch basins around town. That's where all the water drains when storms come. We have a few projects in the capital plan for this, one hundred and twenty-five thousand and twenty-one. And then in twenty-two, we have a, a matching project. This is another plan. Our stormwater management plan has not been updated since nineteen ninety-seven. And so that's, that's seriously overdue. And now that we've finished these sewer plans, this one's time has come, and so we budgeted to do this over the next two years. And we have an annual collection system repairs project at fifty thousand dollars from rate funds. And then I have a project in here in two thousand and twenty-two to rehabilitate the Sock Mountain Pump Station, which is, which is also over twenty years old. Five, Fund Five Oh One, equipment repair and replacement. Dean mentioned that earlier in our discussions, but this, this fund covers all of the equipment for the city. We have about a hundred and twenty vehicles, that's been growing fairly quickly with the police departments ramping up their, their forces. We do, in association with the new Public Works Facility, want to look at transitioning to a full-time shop that will incorporate both police and fire. And we've had discussions with those departments about that, we'll continue those. The ERNR itself, there's about eight hundred and seventeen thousand planned with thirteen vehicle purchases over various departments in twenty-one and another eight hundred and seventy-two thousand with nine vehicles in, in two thousand and twenty-two. Ambulances are a big part of this, as Dean mentioned, there's one planned for next year and two planned for twenty, twenty-two. And finally, the Public Works Building itself. I mentioned to the utilities crew, and I think I mentioned in the last council meeting, that we may have come up with a way to move forward with that. We basically have four million dollars that will be generated over time from the utility funds that are paying into a fund for that. And so we have devised a way of building a combined operations office and crew building with five bays for storing and doing the mechanic work down there, which would be located directly across from the new wastewater building. Carletti Architects has already started on doing a revised site plan for me on that, and I'll get that tomorrow. And they'll, they'll go right from there to, to confirming an estimate for the value of that building. I've got a, just a wagon here right now of two million dollars for the construction of that building. The design work would happen in the, at the end of this year, in conjunction with the the sewer lab ops building, they can design those together, which is much, much more efficient. And we can bid those together as schedules A and B with that, that, if that still makes sense. I'll be reporting on this as the, that goes forward, because we'll want to have council's authorization to both change Carletti's contract, to add in that additional design work and to, to move forward to constructing this in two thousand and twenty-one. We've also got a separate phase for doing what we're calling Phase Two, which would be to build a, a building that would house the various other pieces of equipment, mostly our solid waste trucks and other street department equipment and our vectors. Right now, I just got a plug in here of a million, a million nine to make up the four million dollar budget we have. Ideally, we would build all of this stuff over the next two years and be done with that. What this will allow us to do, though, if we're able to move forward with the Phase One construction in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, then we would be looking at the ability to go to the full-time equipment maintenance operation down there, we'd have the facilities for doing that. So this puts us in a position of being able to get our mechanic out of the mud when he's working on our large trucks. We can't get into the shop now, where we can do that in a, in a little bit more humane manner. So just a final slide, this shows you the totals for all the capital improvement projects that I talked about on the other pages. Discounting the ERNR, which is really not a capital expense per se, about eight million dollars in two thousand and twenty-one and about six point eight in two thousand and twenty-two. Because of the John Liner, George John Liner corridor projects, you're going to see these projects stay fairly high for the next several years. As always with these kinds of things, it's dependent on funding, and we look at this on an annual basis. So that's basically all I have, so if you have any other questions, I'll try to take them.
Actually, I'm going to ask them to hold their questions and have them email to you. And then if you would email the answers to all the council members so that they could see the question and the answers. We're running short of time and, and I see where Mr. Marion requested fifteen minutes at least for his presentation plus questions. So, okay, thank you very much. You run a very comprehensive department, and that was a very comprehensive report. Thank you, Mark. So moving on to our administrative departments, Mr. Doug Merriman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And see if I can do any better on sharing my screen, can you guys see my screen up there? Great, okay. So you know how every parade, you see all the cars drive by, and then there's a lot of horses go by. Once they're all done, there's the poor guy with wheelbarrow in the shovel. That would be me. So I'm going to come through and clean up everything that's left here. Go through it pretty quickly here, we have several departments. This, for the most part, between staffing and operations, they stay about the same, but I'll give you a couple of the highlights of what each one is doing. See if I can. Here we go. So my slide should have changed there. So I will just run through these quickly. The Legislative, which is the City Council Department. As you know, the City Council Chamber AV upgrades have been going on this year. And in talking with Mark, we should be completing those in two thousand and twenty. So there shouldn't be any carryover going into the budget to next year. Election costs are going to be really interesting next year, because not only do we have our regular council members up for reelection, we also have a couple of positions where we have had people fill positions that have been vacated. So I have asked Nikki, our city attorney, to draw us a roadmap a little bit on how that's all going to work this next year. What that'll mean for us is the bill that we get from the county, when we share in the election cost, county-wide, is going to go up a little bit. So I am setting some extra money aside to kind of cover those costs for those number of positions that we'll be doing. Other than that, City Council is staying about the same on your budget for next year and for two thousand and twenty-two. So moving to the next one, the Executive Department, this is Mayor Johnson and my area. This is staying about the same as well, there are two exceptions here. We're doing a little bit additional budget for civil service hearings. And as you heard from the Fire Department, we'll have two Assistant Chief Positions that we'll be doing, and that is a civil service process. So I am adding in some extra money in two thousand and twenty-one to help us if we need any extra consulting or labor time or things to handle those assessment centers. So there's about ten thousand dollars I have in there for that. The other areas, human resources or HR support, this has to do with personnel. We're operating under an employee policy manual right now that is somewhere around thirty-plus years old. So it's time for us to update that employee policy manual. Nikki and I, our city attorney, we've already been working on this. We have a rough draft that we're just going through and editing right now, and then we'll send that to the mayor for review. And you'll be seeing that probably coming sometime right around the turn of the year. That's a really important one, that guides how we do business with staff and within the city. We have new leave policies that have come up even in this COVID environment. So we have to really update all our policies and everything to have them current. One thing that's not known is when you work in an organization that has unions, if there are parts in the union agreements that are silent, they don't address a certain thing, like a certain type of leave, your employee policy manual is the default. So you really want to make sure that everything is up to date and things are consistent between your bargaining units. So we have that in the works for next year. And actually, looking at performance reviews are actually coaching reviews. It's something that we don't do right now, but I think that would be a very wise and prudent thing to start doing. There are some old methods of doing performance reviews and nobody wants to draw the short straw to have to do all of those, because they're, they're not always fun. But there are new ways to do it, and I think with the type of labor force we're getting with millennials and that, it's better to do coaching, touch base type meetings with your staff than just giving them the report card at the end of the year and ask them to sign it, and you go to the next year. So we'll be looking at some different options there, just in case we need some additional support on designing a system and for training of staff. I've set aside ten thousand dollars for that as well. And as you can tell, these are all about risk mitigation, and that's a very important thing we need to be thinking about. So moving on to judicial, this is our municipal court. I guess you know Heidi Stendall is our Court Administrator, she does a great job. Things are running about standard, we're going to be doing the, the main office things that she has been. We are going to be working with Heidi a little bit to give her a little backup. She's kind of a one-person shop. And there are some things in the finance area and handling money and, and some support and things that she can use. And so Jill and I have been brainstorming on that and possibly folding her into the finance family a little bit. So she has some backup and things for when she has time off and things like that. The budget in the judicial area, particularly about judges' salaries, that follows kind of a standard set by District Court and what the other judges are making. Brock does kind of discount that a little bit for us, so we get a good price on that. One of the things we need to do is, under a municipal code, his salary needs to be set in our salary ordinance. That hasn't been done in the past, I will be including that in the salary ordinance this year. That will be an update on that. So I'm going to go ahead and go to kind of the last of the general fund, there are two. Finance, we have staffing and operating costs remain about the same. We do have one person retiring, Cheryl Brew is retiring, as we talked about last meeting. We're going to, we're actually in the hiring process right now. We received, I think, about seventy-three applications for that job. So we've been reading a lot of applications this week, and we've narrowed it down to six or seven. And we'll be doing interviews this next week and hopefully finding a really good candidate that's going to have to fill some big shoes that Cheryl's leaving. So we're looking forward to getting that process done and having that new person in the finance department this next year. Legal Department, this is more or less our indigent defense, our public defenders and engine, indigent defense. We've been going along fine there. One of the things that occurred maybe ten years ago, some of you may know about, there was a class action lawsuit against Burlington and Mount Vernon. And it had to do with public defense and making sure that public defenders are spending enough time with defendants to give them adequate defense. And so there are certain standards that seniors are held to as far as the amount of time. I had the odd experience of my last city I worked with of going out to bid for public defense services. They came in, I looked at them all, and I had to send them back out and say, you guys aren't charging us enough. Because under state law, they measure adequate defense by the amount of time it takes. So it's kind of an odd thing to have a bid where you're encouraging them to charge you more, but it does happen. So we will be updating our indigent defense standards and working on that to make sure we're in compliance with the findings that came out of that class action lawsuit. So those are the general fund extra departments. There are three areas I wanted to just touch on quickly. There are three areas I wanted to just touch on quickly, just so you know, these are items of interest because city council is involved in these. The first is the debt on the City Hall building. Now, the payment when it was originally set up, it was funded by B and O tax collected on cell phones. But due to some legal things that have gone on over the years and just changes in cell phones, the cellphone of today won't look like with the cellphone of ten years from now is going to be. And that's a forty-year loan. So what we're seeing is the B and O tax on cell phones has been steadily decreasing for a number of years now. And it does not now cover the principal and interest payment on the two thousand and eight debt on the City Hall Building. So right now, the general fund is subsidizing because of that B and O tax decrease at about sixty thousand dollars a year. I just wanted to make sure you knew that because that number will probably continue to slide a little bit like that over time. In the budget, I do have the additional fifty thousand per year we're paying on that loan. That comes out of the council's discretionary fund. And that has been something that's been going on since that loan came out. We'll continue to do that. So we are looking at that loan. It leaves it around four and a half percent. I have been working with USDA to try to find ways to see in this interest rate environment if we can refinance that debt and maybe knock the interest rate down significantly. So the next item is the library construction project. This will be substantially completed, not soon enough, probably here in about November. Even then, that's just substantially complete. We will have a punch list and some final costs and things that we need to cover. Realistically, some of those will go into twenty twenty one. I will know more about that just as time comes along. So that project, we will be shifting from construction to occupation. So we'll have the library district will be moving in and setting up and putting books in the library and doing all of that. So next year, we will be doing our operations-type funding. We'll be shifting to that mode. And there's a formula that based on our assessed valuation and the library's levy rate, we will be supporting that library to the tune of four hundred to four hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So that comes from the general fund. So we'll be seeing that transition over the next year to getting out of the building business and then just supporting them and doing that. And then the last item, this has been touched on by Mark a little bit. This was initiative nine seventy-six in the Transportation District. And I won't just repeat everything that Mark said. Basically, this is ruled unconstitutional. We're holding the money now, waiting to see what the legislature is going to do. But just know this was a major funding source for arterial roadway projects. And we were able to go in and find some REIT money and do that, but that won't be a sustainable revenue source for that. But it buys us a little time to see what we can do and to wait the outcome of what's going to happen with that initiative. So those were all of the cleanup funds that I needed to bring to your attention and talk about. And I can answer any questions you might have on these. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands pop up or any comments. So thank you for your time. And anytime if you have questions or you think of things, please feel free to email me or give me a call.
All right. Well, I want to thank all our directors for taking the time and the energy and the effort to put forth really great presentations. I hope that it did provide not only some answers to questions, but actually educate you as far as all the other projects and tasks and their their job description, things that fall under their job description. It is almost eight o'clock, so I am going to just remind the council members that we're looking forward to seeing you tomorrow to talk about the utility and property taxes and and anything else that you want to bring forward. And if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I hope you all have a fantastic evening and we are adjourned.
Good night, Madam Mayor.
Good night, Brenda.